All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for coming to the monthly meeting of the Otoka Board of Mayor and Alderman. My name is Mayor Barry Aiken. On behalf of the Board of Aldermen and our town of Otoka staff, I'd like to welcome you here tonight. We appreciate you taking time out of, I'm sure, your very busy schedules to be here to see how your town government works. When you came into the room tonight, there were two sign-up sheets. The one to the left is strictly kind of a housekeeping item, just to give us your attendance here. It's got your address on there if we need to reach out to you to get back with you about something. The one on the right is a public comment form. If you would wish to address the board tonight, we would ask you to make sure that you are signed up with that public comment item on the right. Toward the start of tonight's meeting on our agenda, there will be that public comment time, and during that time, if anybody has signed up on the form and wishes to address the board, may do so for up to two minutes. Please wait until you've been recognized by myself. I would ask you to come up to the podium and state your name and your address. Of course, it goes without saying, we would ask you to be very respectful, as we will be respectful to you, and if during the meeting you need to, if there's anybody that needs to have a conversation, we've just asked you to please remove yourself, step outside as we continue on with the rest of the agenda. Once that public comment time period is over, that will be the only time that you can address the board, and we'll press on with the rest of tonight's agenda. Again, I very much welcome you to the meeting this evening. We are glad that you're here. For those in attendance that would like to join us in an opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance, before we get to that, I've asked Mr. Aubrey King, Mr. Aubrey, if you can make your way up to the podium, sir. Mr. Aubrey lives on Tracy Road, he goes to Galway Baptist Church. I've asked Mr. Aubrey to open us up with prayer tonight. So, if you would like to participate in opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance, please stand at this time. Mr. Aubrey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity tonight to meet. We thank you for our leaders that you've provided us. We thank you for our mayor and these Board of Aldermen. We thank you for the good leadership that they have provided the town of Otoka. Because of your blessing, we live quiet and peaceful lives, and we're grateful for that. So we pray this evening that you would bless this meeting, help these leaders to accomplish what they desire, help us to give them good fellowship. We ask these things in our Savior's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, today is Tuesday, September 17th. I have the time at 7:03 PM. I would ask the town recorder to take a roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Aiken.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Renfro.
Here.
Alderman Janini.
Here, ma'am.
Alderman Harper.
Here.
Alderman Pace.
Here.
And Alderman Dichi.
Here.
Thank you.
The entire board's present, we do have a quorum to conduct business, and we come to the public comments item on our agenda. Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. Brett Pickard. Mr. Brett, would you come up here, please, sir?
I'd be happy to. I have a few things here for you. All right. Brett Pickard, only 165 Acton, sir.
Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
Do you see what I'm dealing with there?
For those that are in the room, you might want to show them your picture you gave us. Yes, sir.
Why can't that sign let be taken down? Y'all don't have a clue what that traffic does. None of you have ever sat there and watched it. I bet some of the officers tell me, this is stupid, this is a waste of our time to be sitting there doing it. The people are already stopped because there's nobody directing traffic, and they get out of line, they go on. And then you have somebody that doesn't turn, say, pull the big trailer, and they come up there, oh, I'll turn here on this street and go across Kimble. Well, it's solid, and there's no way to back a 20-foot trailer out of there five o'clock on Friday afternoon. Why can they not go over and direct that traffic and move that traffic and take that sign down and let them go? Would y'all like to come and watch it one afternoon with me? Be glad to have you. I invited you last year or so, and you looked at me like I was crazy. Y'all ever been caught in that traffic? What do you do? Sit there and fuss and cuss, yeah? No, and if that sign was there, you could turn left and go on. Try to go to the ball field, try to go to Croker, try to go 51 Highway. So, would y'all consider taking that sign down? Yes, no?
I sat in that traffic tonight.
Good, good. I literally had to ask them to move to get out of my driveway. I had people calling me, what's wrong? I said, I don't know why. They said, well, SWAT teams at your house. I said, no, they are over there writing people tickets and so forth for turning left coming off that bridge. Really? Have we moved to Galway, Hyrington? It's embarrassing to say I live here now, stuff like that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. Mr. Henry Suter, Mr., excuse me, I didn't have my call. Mr. Henry Suter.
Henry Suter, 37 Vernon. Spoke to the board last month about my concerns about the stormwater fee that was being assessed. Something may not have gotten clearly communicated. It's not that I don't understand. In my current job, I could very easily be forced between, do I do this nice-to-have building fix or fix this stormwater issue? I have to pick the stormwater issue. I understand the importance. What I'm asking is that the Board of Aldermen and Mayor do try to drive more towards getting more of a commercial base for us, so that we're not dealing solely with residential. Some of you may remember the rather colorful expressions that came out when we had that straight-line windstorm, a lot of fences came down, and people were told they had to pay a fee to put the fence back up in the same footprint. Some of those comments about this seems like we're just trying to take more money from the people. A friend of mine, when he got the notice about the stormwater fee, it was kind of like, wow, she's another one. So, please be pushing towards that. Looking at the IDB minutes, I do see a little bit more encouragement than I've seen from, for the most recent compared to what I've seen in the past year. That is good. Let's make sure we're keeping that pressure and awareness to move this forward. I do like the idea of the branding story, and I showed Mayor Walker, if you look at it closely, the train is there, just like the arrow in the FedEx logo.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. Ms. Amy Graham. I did it again, Ms. Amy Graham.
Thank you, Mayor. Amy Graham, 67 Webster Cove. I'm just making comment, really questions about the exhibit Charlie, specifically the SSR fee proposal. I see the bottom line dollar figure, and just wondering, you've got the three listed of grants and loans there. The first one being a grant, the second one being a grant, and the third one being a revolving fund, which I assume is the loan. So you're paying $350,000 for the services. It doesn't give a timeline, but it does have a scope of fees, if additional fees are required, and hourly rates. But I'm just looking at the dollar figure and wondering, those three grants and loans, if they, you know, if the dollar figure is somewhere in the million dollars, you're paying $1 of administrative fee and management for every $3 spent. It just seems excessive to me. I just wondered what the dollar figure would be in the timeline that we are getting their services for.
Ms. Graham, I have your, I know you submitted questions to the meeting question address, and I have those, and I will address those, and if you care to, I don't want to take your time up at the podium, but I've got them, and I'm going to go over each and every one of them. Very good questions, and full transparency, we're going to give you your answers.
Awesome, I greatly appreciate it, and I know Mr. Janini also responded to me just to say if there's anything, I said I would address it at the meeting, so I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
All right. So, I think I'll do that right now with Ms. Graham's questions. Unfortunately, I don't think, Kurt, you don't have these to be able to put them up on the thing.
They don't.
Ms. Graham, if I skip any, catch me on it, okay? Because I think you probably, hopefully you've got them in front of you. So, the first question.
I do, but I will hold you to quick, I know the real lines.
The first question, Ms. Graham, these are all having to do with, and I'm going to be very 20,000-foot, our engineering firm, the engineering firm with the town, and concerning some grants and loans and things like that. That's what Ms. Graham asked us about. Her first question, what is the total of funds provided by each of the three grants/loans to be managed by SSR? Whenever you hear SSR, SSR is the town's engineering firm. That represents us and works with us developing engineering things. To be managed by SSR, did the proposals for each of the three grant loans include administrative fee line items? So, the three things we're talking about, the first one was a Tennessee Department of Environmental and Conservation Division of Water Resources State Water Infrastructure Grants Program Regionalization. This was a grant that we received a year ago, about a year ago, last April. That was a total of $8,192,350. It's the largest grant in Otoka's history, and we were very, very excited and very honored to be a recipient of that grant. That's going to help us a lot with our infrastructure. So, $8,192,350. The second, Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development Infrastructure Planning Grant. That was the amount of $448,875. I know I'm throwing a lot of figures at you. Hopefully, if you've got something, write these down. Tennessee Department of Environmental and Conservation, again, Clean Water State Revolving Fund, and that was a total, well, $7,700,000 is the total for that. So, the second part of that was, did the proposals for each of the grants include administrative fees? Yes, that was included as far as the applications. Each grant and loan application has a line item for administrative fees. That was part of the grant that is included in the money that the town gets. The next one, if not, why not? Well, it was. So, vital to achieve accurate financial requests for transparency to the respective program citizens. Absolutely. Town of Otoka, full transparencies for everything we do, absolutely everything we do. So, if so, which it does, does $360,000 equal to or less than what was requested in the respective proposals? SSR's proposal is less than what the town of Otoka had allocated on the grant loan application. Let's see. Lost my place. Okay, it says if not, why not? But it is. How are these planned in the future proposals? What is the sum total of the three funds to be managed? What percent of this total is the $360,000? So, when you add those three things that I mentioned, again, the one number's at you, $17,811,100, and that $360,000 is 2.02% of. Are we getting bang for the buck? I believe we're getting excellent bang for the buck. SSR, that very first thing that I mentioned, the $8,192,000 grant, SSR played a huge role along with the town staff and us getting awarded that grant, and that is going to go a long way. Again, I could bore you with the details. It has to do with the new lift station and the new pump station for our wastewater infrastructure. So, that goes a long way for that. Especially considering we've already approved a one-year, $300,000 contract proposal with SSR for engineering planning of the water sewage and asset management. Does SSR have a monopoly allowing fee inflation in management services, any internet or local employment options, rather than sending more money to a Memphis company? So, okay, does it have a monopoly allowing fee inflation for management services? Fee inflation is not occurring. Town of Otoka has a required procurement process. The town's grant administration RFQ was posted in multiple places online, as well in the Covington leader. In other words, we absolutely covered everywhere when we put this out for bid, and SSR was the only proposal that we received for that. As I've mentioned, we've had before talks since I've been in Alderman in 2010 and now mayor since '22. We have had, I think we've had one other engineering company. I've looked at some of y'all. Alderman Janini.
Yeah, we had Ledford, Kevin Ledford.
But when it came time to choose the engineering company, the board got proposals, we interviewed those, and the board made the decision to choose SSR as our partner in continuing with our engineering requirements. What is the timeline that SSR will provide their services? If multi-year funds for any or all of the three, are you committing future expenses or fees to SSR by doing this $360,000 contract? There's always a chance that additional funds would be requested. If this does occur, the request would be presented to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. There will be no changes unless the scope of work that's been laid out changes. In other words, if we ask them to do more, it's only natural they can come back and charge us more for that. But that would only be the case, and the board would have to approve any type of scope of work or any increase in what we pay them. So, oh, timeline, sorry, I'm saying. The TDEC ARC grant extends to the end of 2026. We have to have that new wastewater infrastructure in place by specifically September of '26. The planning grant contract extends to May of '27, and the state revolving fund loan has a 30-year term. And that is all the questions that I have. Ms. Amy?
Oh, that's perfect.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Just 100%. I greatly appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. All right. I have one more other name on our public comment period, and that would be Mr. Colby Burns. And, Mr. Colby, if you would come up to the podium, please, sir. How you doing, sir? Speak loud, Mr. Colby.
I'm doing good. I'm Colby Burns, and I live at 4692 Tracy Road. And I'm a scout in the Otoka Troop 60, and I just have a few questions about the grant for fireman safety equipment.
So, Mr. Colby, you're here tonight fulfilling a scout requirement?
Yes, sir.
What would that be, sir?
It's for the citizenship and the community merit badge.
Okay, citizenship and the community merit badge. Press on, sir.
First off, how many firemen does the town of Otoka have?
Okay. Do you have multiple questions, Mr. Colby?
Yes, sir.
I'll tell you what, if you'll read those out now, what we're going to do is we're going to pull, if the Aldermen want to make a motion, we're going to pull that grant out of our consent agenda, and if you'll stick around, I'll have the fire chief answer every one of your questions. But go ahead and give it to us during this period. Go ahead, sir.
So, first is how many firemen does the town of Otoka have? Second is, do you think that we have enough firemen? Third is, will this grant provide equipment for all of the firemen? And that's all the questions I have.
Okay. Chief, you got them? Because Mr. Colby, he can handle them till you when it comes time.
I'm ready.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here tonight. That is all the names that I have on our public comment form tonight, so we will press on with the next item on our agenda. That is our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and are generally enacted by one motion of the board. Except for items that are removed from the consent agenda, there will be no separate discussion of the items at this time. So, do I have a motion from the board about our consent agenda tonight?
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, but pulling the financial and sales tax report, I have a question on that, and also pulling D, the resolution of the grant application for the Firehouse Subs.
All right. I have a motion by Alderman Harper. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman Schaefer. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda with the two exceptions noted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next up on our agenda tonight's all business, we have none, so new business. We are going to go ahead and put those two items that we pulled out of consent up in our new business. So, why don't we talk about the Firehouse Application? And I'll have Chief, why don't you come on up? If you want to give us background, then we'll get to Mr. Colby's questions.
Sir, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board. This year, we're actually putting in for the Firehouse Subs grant. Because we have a Firehouse Subs located in Martha, Tennessee, we're in close proximity to one of the restaurant locations, which opens us up to be able to apply for their public safety grant, which they offer. If you go in and eat, they ask you if you want to go ahead and donate a dollar towards their fireman fund, because Firehouse Subs, obviously, was started by firemen in Jacksonville, Florida. And so, it's a great program. We've actually used them in the past for another grant. This grant in particular is for firefighter survival. What we're looking to do is add a new RIC pack, which RIC is Rapid Intervention Team or Rapid Intervention Crew, just depending on how it's used. And what that is, is it's a crew made up of anywhere between three to four, possibly even as many as five firemen, where their only goal or their only objective is to rescue a downed firefighter inside of a building, either structural collapse or in a fire itself. That's their primary job. So what a RIC pack is, is actually a portable air bottle that is, comes with an extra base piece, because if there was a structural collapse that may have taken place, or if a firefighter happened to call a mayday because they were in danger, because either they ran out of air, it's an extra bottle that's being taken in to where that firefighter can be given those, that extra air pack to be able to breathe and to be able to have time to where we can go ahead and pull him out and get him in the safety and get him into medical need if necessary. Some of the other pieces, or some of the other components to this grant that we're asking for, because it's approximately $36,000 that we're asking for, the RIC pack alone is going to run about $6,000, $7,000. And then the other components that we're looking at is what's called bailout, and it's for firefighter survival. And these are bailout kits where they're attached to carabiners along with rescue rope to where, if it's a multi-story building, which we know we have a lot of multi-story houses, we have the apartment complex, which are three stories, these are kits that would actually attach to the firefighter SEBA, which is their air packs. It would attach to them, and they could be able to use it as lifelines, to be able to repel or to be able to bail out of a multi-story facility. And so, with all of this, what we're looking at doing is, we currently have 21 air bottles or air packs on the three different pieces of apparatus, and what we're wanting to do is outfit each air pack with this bailout kit for firefighters' survival, and that's what the purpose of this grant's for. Would you like me to address?
So, I think that was one of your questions, wasn't it, Mr. Colby? Okay, so can you give us the other question for Chief Scott?
One question you had was how many firefighters we have. Currently, we have 17 full-time firefighters with the Otoka Fire Department. We have five part-time firefighters, and then we have seven volunteer firefighters that make up the complement. And then you have one more question, and I couldn't remember it right offhand. I'm sorry.
Do we have enough? Do you think it's enough? Go ahead, Mr. Colby. It's your question, not ours.
Do you think that we have enough firemen? Honestly, no. Per standards, we have national standards that we follow, which is NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Association. It states that we should have 2.11 firefighters for every 1,000 population, and currently we're almost at 11,000 populations, so that would say we need to have at least 21, 22 firefighters. When you look at the part-time, part-time is not with us on a regular 24-hour shift like all, like our full-time firefighters are. So when you go and look at what our full-time staffing is, it's a minimum of six personnel per day. With that same standard that they require, if we were to respond to a house fire, it would require a minimum of 16 firefighters just on that one house fire, just to do the minimum work that would be necessary in a safe manner.
Is that all of your questions? Mr. Colby?
Will this be, will this grant provide enough equipment for all of the firemen?
It wouldn't provide it for all of the firemen, but it would provide it for all of the firemen that would be on duty, that would be needing it at that time. Yes.
All right. And Chief, I know it's in our packet, but I'll just ask for public awareness, is there any local, is there any matching grant that the town has to come up with? If we get this, is there any local, do we have to come up with some money?
No. It's a non-matching grant.
100%.
100%.
All right.
Thank you. Anything else?
This town recorder, you going to read the resolution by title, please?
All right. A resolution approving and supporting the submission of a grant application to the Firehouse Sub Corporation.
I would entertain a motion concerning Exhibit D.
Motion, sir.
I have a motion to approve by Alderman Renfro.
Second.
Second by Alderman Dichi. Any other discussion about this grant application? Hearing none. Because it is a resolution, we won't do a roll call, and all in favor of approving the resolution stated, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I carry this. All right, the other thing we pulled out of the consent agenda was the financial report. Would you like the town administrator to go over?
Yes, yes, I just, I got one question, but just in the issue of transparency, the office does a good job, just to kind of walk through it, so.
All right, Mark?
Yeah, happy to do that. So if you look at your first sheet, I think Mr. Kurt's got it up there on the screen, a general fund, $949,000 in revenues thus far, and $2,008,000,000 in expenditures, so. So what it looks like, we have more expenses than we do revenue. And that is true, but we only have property tax coming in. So you can see our property tax line. That's the one that sticks out the most on the revenue side. So we get that in October and in February. So you'll see those numbers start to shift in the coming months. State Street Eight, we have $65,800 in revenue, about $10,000 in expenditure. So we're in good shape. Cash on hand at the end of the period is $524,000. Drug Fund, received a little bit of revenue there in that particular fund, $9,700. And we have not expended any money out of that as of yet. And we've got about $51,000 on hand. Our solid waste, we've got $138,000 in revenue and $103,000 in expenses. So we do have positive cash flow there, $35,000 and $208,000 on hand. Our ARPA funds, so we've got the ARPA funds, which is a total of $2.8 million. And then we've had, over a few years, you can see the expenditures that have been flowing through over those fiscal years, according to the spending plan that the board approved some time ago. Our investment plan, so we have invested some of our reserve funds or a lot of our reserve funds and our ARPA funds. The ARPA funds that are invested and we're earning interest on, those interest earnings are non-restricted. Where the ARPA funds themselves are, the principal amount are restricted, but the interest earnings are not. Because of our good stewardship there, thus far fiscal year '25, we brought in the $91,684 in interest earnings. On the water fund side, we've got $264,000 in revenue and $298,000 on the expenditure side. So we're currently showing a negative $33,000. Mr. Deb has got an answer for you on that, if there's a question about it. And on the sewer funds, so $371,000 on revenue and $412,000 on expenses. We've got some answers for you if there's a question on that.
Yes, if you wanna stop, I was talking to Deb. That was really the main reason, was looking at this month versus the year, last calendar year, month over month. Just wanting to, again, make sure that, you know, that we're okay.
One of the expenses is our work comp liability insurance that has been paid in August. And so between the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund, we had a total of $294,000. $40,000 of that was in water and $46,000 was in the sewer. And then we also had some SSR design for the sewer that we've been talking about that were to be paid. And we haven't started collecting our revenues yet, our projected revenues.
So in your opinion, you know, this will?
It should wash out, like Mark said, yeah.
And we should receive some grant reimbursements as well. We haven't realized that either. So we've paid out some expenditures as part of the sewer projects in the Tri-Cities Water Laguna, the West Water Laguna expansion. We haven't received anything back as of yet. So that's not realized on the revenue side. Good questions.
Ms. Deb, the workers' comp numbers, again, is that $40,000 for water, $46,000 for sewer?
Yes, $46,000 for sewer. I missed it. It was $24,000 for water, $46,000 for sewer. And the reason it's so much more for the sewer is because of the budgeted amount. So the liability in the, of the sewer system and all of the other stuff, the property, we had to budget like $2.8 million because of the expected expenses this year. And so its percentage of the sewer is higher. It should go down next year, maybe.
I guess I'm also noticing the sewer treatment fees.
$40,000 more.
Or $40,000 more than last year.
I don't have an answer to that.
That's fine. Just check into that.
That's a bill from Mumford.
Yeah.
As the board knows, that's something that's billed directly from Mumford. It's not every month. It's, it's.
The sewer treatment fees went up. They don't necessarily track with the fiscal year. So I can get you that exact amount over at Mumford. Send that information out to the board.
I mean, I'm sure that's based on the meter flows.
Yes, of course. Very happy to do that for us.
Yes. All right.
Is that Mumford a year behind?
I'll get you that number.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes, or excuse me, the financial and sales tax report.
Motion to approve the sales tax report and financial report.
A motion by Alderman Pace. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Renfro. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Good stuff. Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the finance and sales tax report? In the record, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, we have a proclamation. I'm gonna come down to the floor. All right, we got some ladies, Ms. Jennifer from the Daughter of the American Revolution, DAR. Come on up, Ms. Jennifer. One thing that we feel very important about, one thing that we've done, if you've come to the meetings, usually you come to the September meeting, you will hear one of the things that we put a lot of pride and a lot of weight into. And that is proclaiming Constitution Week. I'm gonna read that. And it's always, I told Ms. Jennifer, and maybe y'all have already heard, it's something special to me because my birthday today is also Constitution Day. This is when it was ratified 237 years ago. So, you know, as a teenager, I didn't give a rip. But somewhere around my twenties and thirties, I started being real conscious of what such a precious and important document our Constitution is. And so we're gonna read the proclamation. I'm gonna give Ms. Jennifer a chance to tell you a little bit about DAR or whatever she wants to talk to us about. So, all right. So where at? September 17th, 2024 marks the 200th and 37th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention, Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And whereas the Constitution and its amendments in trying civic rights and freedoms establish a representative form of government and recognize, to an extent unprecedented at the time of its drafting, that the authority to govern comes from the consent of those governed. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 was signed into law by President Dwight Eisenhower on August 2nd, 1956, guaranteeing the issuance of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas the town of Atoka honors the Constitution of the United States of America. Now therefore, I, Barry L. Aiken, Mayor of the town of Atoka, Tennessee, hereby proclaim the week of September 17th to the 23rd, 2024, to be Constitution Week in the town of Atoka and call upon all of our citizens to join me in commemorating the 237th anniversary of the drafting of this magnificent document.
Hear, hear.
Hear, hear.
And let's all. Ms. Jennifer, four of yours.
All right. Well, on behalf of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, River City Chapter in Millington, which is one of the largest chapters in the whole state, and I'm proud to be a member, we want to wish you a happy birthday. And we'd also like to thank you for this proclamation. Constitution is very important. There's all sorts of talk being out there about, oh, is it going to be repealed? Not while there's breath left in this body. That's all I can tell you. I do wanna close with a quote from Truman, which I just have to share it. I'm sorry, you just have to bear with me. "So much blood has already been shed for the ideals which we cherish and for Franklin Roosevelt and for which Franklin Roosevelt lived and died, that we dare not permit even a momentary pause in the hard fight for victory." "Today, the entire world is looking to America for enlightened leadership, to peace and progress. Such a leadership requires a vision, courage, and tolerance. It can only be provided by our United Nations, deeply devoted to the highest ideals." Harry Truman.
Hear, hear.
Thank you.
We got somebody on the front row, too. She did it. You got it?
We got it.
There you go.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer.
Thank you all.
Moving on, we have exhibit K in your packets. And we had a meeting previous to this meeting, a work session, excuse me. And it's exhibit K. Kurt, can you bring that up? I don't wanna dug you into a loop, but I know you got it somewhere. Yep, one's there. We have contracted with Younger and Associates. We have a lot of focus group meetings. Had a lot of input from citizens as far as what about Atoka. And Younger and Associates took all that information and presented us with this new branding and marketing. So, Ms. Recorder, you wanna read us the title of the resolution, please?
Okay. A resolution of the Board of Mayor and Alderman and the town of Atoka to adopt an official logo for the town of Atoka.
All right. Chair would entertain a motion about what we just talked about.
The right term is not tabled. What is it?
Postpone.
Postpone. I like the logo. I do. It's brand new. But for me, I know there were some focus groups. I don't know if it would be smart to just, again, get it out in front of the public to make sure that everybody's kind of aware. I'm like 99% sure this is gonna be our next logo. Again, I like it. I just, since it was just kind of put upon me, I guess I personally would like to make a motion to postpone it until the October meeting.
Second. Okay, I got a motion from Alderman Harper. I got a second by Alderman Giannini. Any other discussion? I mean, I like that. I think we should put it out on the, you know, website and let the citizens come and have their thoughts about it. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm like Alderman Harper. I don't dislike it, but this is the first time I've seen it. So I would like to look at it a little bit longer.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion to postpone voting on this until?
The October meeting.
October meeting. All in favor of the motion? Say, listen, order. Now it's a resolution. We're good. All in favor of resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's postponed. Miscellaneous items from the mayor, Board of Alderman, and town administrator. We've got appointments. I'm trying to look for my notes from last meeting. So one of the things that happened last month was the board had voted to expand our Board of Zoning Appeals from a three-person panel to five persons. So I put forth two names, Ms. Chalene Gates and Amanda, that's, I'm missing the second, Mr. Jerry Wayne Boyce, right?
Boyce.
Pulled that right out. Good. And that was a notice of kind of an FYI. We are also lumping, so it was felt that, just to tidy things up, the board would approve those appointments. And in addition to those two, Mr. Curtis Mayo is coming upon renewal of serving on the board. And he is willing to serve at the pleasure of that. Very thankful for that. So what I'm asking the board for tonight is a motion to confirm Jerry Wayne Boyce, Chalene Gates, and Curtis Mayo to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Motion to approve the confirmation of all three individuals to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I have a motion by Alderman Pace. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any other discussion? Three. Right.
Fireman. I'm in the motion to, to the three-year terms.
I'm glad you can read this, lady. You didn't know either?
No.
All right. Fourth, three-year term.
Okay. Then my discussion is, is there anything where those terms by law need stacker?
Ms. Amanda, you wanna come up to the podium?
I'm more than ready.
You're directing it from the chair anyway. Go ahead.
Yes, and the other members do stacker. So the initial, you would do one-year, two-year, three-year term. So Mr. Mayo going in the three-year, you would still have that staggered.
But all three, the three, then the other? We still want, waiting for one more to get to five?
I'm sorry, we have five. Chuck Lane. Stephen Schaefer. Kurt Mayo. Jerry Boyce. And now Chalene Gates.
Good question. All right. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are confirmed and appointed. That's all I got as far as miscellaneous from me. Or Alderman?
Just got one thing. And I've talked to Chief briefly about it. And it's Mr. Pickett who brought it up in the public comment about the sign off a main no-left turn. Chief, do you mind if I can come up? Well, that sign, myself, I think. That sign, no-left turn, I know we put that in not too long ago, but I'd kind of like some feedback from you and your staff on that. So we don't really have a formal position either way. This is one of those things that was, the law was put in place, the change of the roadway or the prohibition between those hours were put in place by the board. And, you know, there are some that we've heard that are against the no-left turn at that particular location. But equally as important, there are people out there that do want us enforcing that. At the, at the end of the day, we'll do whatever the board's will and pleasure is. Again, we don't really hold a formal position there. Some feel, obviously, that it allows cars to stay in a direct line of motion and come up to the three-way stop and they affect their turn or go straight. And that evidently helps, I guess, at Mead Lake and Atoka-Ataville. Others feel that with that left turn, it blocks it up. So at the end of the day, whatever's more expeditious. I think there's a possibility you could have a traffic study done on something like that. I've heard several different opinions on, you know, making right turn onlys for certain streets, maybe right turn only for Mead Lake, right turn only for Kimbrough kind of things. So there's a lot of things, there's a lot of options out there. Just whatever those options are, as long as we're informed, we'll do what we need to do.
I guess for me on the traffic study, knowing that the mini-rampabout is coming, I hate to spend those funds, knowing that that whole situation is gonna drastically change when the mini-rampabout comes into effect. And I guess I'm just asking, maybe not as necessarily as Chief, because I appreciate you, you know, wanting to follow the rules of the board, but we may have made a mistake. And in your opinion, or in your feedback from your officer's opinion, do you feel that that no-left turn is more of a hindrance than a help?
In some, in some instances, it is. Absolutely. Yeah. So I've been. In some, in some instances, it is. Absolutely. Yeah. Um, so I've been, I, I too have sat through that, that line. Um, it's been, uh, anywhere from four to six minutes to get through that, that same backup. Um, some days it's very light, some days it's not. Um, and I, and I know with the, the Highway fourteen being extended up, uh, in that last bit of construction that we had a few years back, more of those people are coming further north, and they're using us to get from highway to highway. Um, and we do have a, a heavy imprint there. Um, our officers, they were in the intersection tonight. They have been in the intersections when they can. This whole folder, I did a two-week look back. This folder right here is calls specifically from the time of five to six, um, where they could not be in that intersection. So when there's opportunities for them to be in the intersection to help that traffic get through, they certainly will be there.
Is that one of the locations that you're gonna have one of crossing guards?
Yes, so, so we, we are finishing, we're in back, the background stage right now. We, uh, I, I've seen a lot of the feedback on social media in regards to the, that, that backup and such, and, and quite a few comments, uh, hundreds of comments, matter of fact. Um, but we had three applications for that particular, uh, opportunity, and all three applications, while they, they certainly wanna help out, I don't think their intention, uh, at this point is to help out every day. So we're gonna get what we can get and be thankful for it.
Thank you.
Alderman Harbor?
Yes.
Just to speak to the liability of the town, should the Alderman decide to change the signage, it would probably be in the town's passengers to have a traffic study done independently to confirm that this is the action that the town should take. In case there's some incident at the intersection, then the town can rely on that independent study.
Makes sense. So kind of piggybacking on that, uh, cause we don't wanna do a traffic study and then all of a sudden it, it changes. So we're, I guess that would be more of a, where are we kind of, the mini roundabout beginning and, and starting to take shape there as well?
Do we have, uh, an update either from Public Works Director?
I'm gonna say I'm working either work or.
We do have this, we do have this SSR here that has been working with T-Dot and getting us compliant. Uh, so Mr. Ben Ledzinger and Mr. Wesley Yarbro, um, whoever wants to.
So I brought my spokesmodel tonight.
Yes.
Sorry, I couldn't resist.
Oh, no.
Um, Mr. Ben is in to your.
Left.
Left.
Yes.
My right.
I am not the spokesmodel.
Go ahead.
Uh.
So the question is, the update for the roundabout's gonna be at Mumford, Atoka, in Minshew?
We're finalizing the design as we speak. Uh, we're, one of the things that we're doing as part of that are establishing the east property line of State Route two oh six. That determines how much property we may need to purchase.
Okay.
So that is the critical piece of information that we're working on now. Once we satisfy that, we'll be able to move to the next stage, which will be negotiation with the property owners to purchase them right away, which we will then be able to finalize what we've gotta do with the state, which is a driveway permit that they're allowing us to do this under, which will expedite that process. And if everything works out the way that we think it will, we might be building this next construction season.
So springtime. First quarter, second quarter, second quarter, twenty-five?
Let's, let's say second quarter, just in case. Yeah. Doesn't go like I think it would.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question regarding the, uh, signage.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Why, so this clearly is something that the community is not a very big fan of. Why did we, uh, since I wasn't part of the board at the time, I'm curious, why did we vote to do this? And, uh, what was the genesis of it?
Uh, speaking for myself, you know, I don't have a problem with a left turn if it's clear and it doesn't impede the, the traffic. If somebody is waiting to turn left and there's oncoming traffic, they can't, now they're stopping up even more to the flood.
Mayor, I'm worried about the, the law. The law is the law right now. I, I actually have a problem with asking the chief of police in the middle of a board meeting what he feels about the validity of a law. I think that's kind of maybe not a really good idea anyway. Uh, if he was a private citizen, out of uniform, that'd be fine to ask, but when you're asking the chief of police in uniform in front of the town, do you think that this law is valid? I don't, I'm not very comfortable with, but I'm more curious about, why did we put this rule in place to begin with? Clearly, voters don't, or the, sorry, the citizens of the town of Atoka don't like it. I'm just curious why we did it.
Other than the reasons you said.
Other than what I said, I really don't.
I also believe we had a former Public Works Director that was in support of it, so that, that's, you know, water.
I'm okay taking it down, you know, the attorney rang on my parade, so I would, I would have made a motion.
We didn't do the study to put it up.
So talk about that.
Yeah, yeah. I've just, I've received more complaints about it, no left turn than not having no left turn.
And my suggestion would be that maybe you, and Public Works can probably speak to this better than I can, but it may be that you want to consult with the traffic engineer for a two-part study. An initial preliminary study about the current status, and then a projection of how that would change. And then after the roundabout is installed, they can update the report, and that should be more cost-effective. And you give the engineer the full scope of the project that way.
I have a motion. Recommendation motion.
I guess my recommendation would be that if the town staff could come up with an RFP for a traffic study, a two-part traffic study. And approximate cost of said study.
Mr. Hahn, Administrator, do you have questions about the motion before we?
Was that a motion or?
Well, it will be. I have a motion from Alderman Harbor. I have a second by Alderman Giannini. Now, discussion.
I wanna know what it's gonna call first.
Right.
Otherwise, I'll take the chance and just take it there.
And I'm, I'm concerned that when the new roundabout comes in, goes in, and we've got traffic flowing smoother, then now somebody turning left, jamming things up, I would have, I, I think that could be an issue. Maybe not.
I kinda think that too. I mean, let's go to roundabouts, making it a right in and out.
So now we get somebody turning left, they're gonna jam up that. But anyway, that's.
Why'd you take those signs down?
Yeah, so.
Well, but the, the whole reason that roundabouts are sold to us in the first place is it gives natural traffic breaks. So, um, that, that may be a different point there too as well, that you don't have that stop and go that you currently have as well.
Okay. So I will ask now, Mr. Town Administrator, do you feel you have guidance and direction for what the board is running?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd like you to repeat the motion, actually.
Go ahead. Okay, sure. My motion, uh, is, is for town staff to establish an RFP, request proposal for a two-part traffic study, uh, before and after the roundabout. Um, and part of that RFP, um, before the board, the board will vote on it, will be in, in, uh, an approximate cost of, of the traffic study.
Second.
If we get, we get those, we can put the RFP out in that two-part scenario that, that the board's desiring to do, and then we bring you back. Uh, really, it's no cost other than some staff time to assemble the RFP and release it. Sorry, uh, thought I hit the button. But to do the, the RFP, there's really no cost other than staff time to do that, and we would bring those proposals, whatever we, we received by the deadline, back to the board. We'd open them up, uh, through the normal procurement process and bring whatever the results were to the board for, for consideration.
Okay.
So there won't be any action essentially until the board voted on whatever the cost was.
And I can't see myself voting for it, but I would like to see what they, what they come up with.
Will do. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. I think we're good with the discussion, so all in favor of, uh, the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Staff knows what to do. Any other miscellaneous items from Alderman?
I've got a thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
There's a gentleman that works in Public Works and Dorothy, I'm sorry, Parks. And Dorothy might be able to help him. Nylan, Mr. Nylan?
Uh, Matt Nolan. He actually, he doesn't actually currently work for us anymore because he had graduated high school, so he got him a full-time job. He was one of our part-time guys, but I did make sure to praise him. But you can go ahead and tell the story.
Congratulations to him. I'm sorry, he's not working for us. Um, I was out and about, and I spoke with a, a lady on Walker Parkway, and she talked to Mr. Nolan, who was out cutting grass for the city. She asked him, she had a row of bushes that she had chopped down a little bit, but she'd like to have that mower just run over and kind of mow them up. She asked him if he would do it. He said, no, ma'am, I'm sorry, I can't do it. This is city, city equipment. The next Saturday, I think maybe the next day, he went over there on his own and dug up those bushes for her. So I just wanted to say thank you to him and Public.
So what's his name one more time?
Uh, Matthew Nolan.
Okay.
Matthew Nolan.
Yeah, our maintenance guys get asked, asked pretty often those certain things, and lots of times they went back and helped them on their own time. We, a lot of times, while we can't do it on work hours or on the equipment, a lot of our, um, staff is, you know, really gracious to go back and help out the citizens when they can.
Thank you, Alderman Giannini, for highlighting that young man. And that's just another example of Team Atoka. All right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Well, no, Mr. Town Administrator.
No, I think that they need to do the traffic study with, is, is a wise decision to try to bring some more permanent resolution to those two stressful intersections. Uh, that was the only other that I had on my agenda for miscellaneous items.
And, and I just wanna say, I think Mr. Bren left, but, you know, this is the way it should work. When, when we have laws, you don't like them, then we, we can change them. And if we get a, you know, majority of it, that's what we did with the fence. Somebody tonight talked about the fence permits. If the board listened, we changed. So that's the way it should work. You have a problem, you bring it to your representatives, and we see if we can't get it fixed. So that's the way, that's, that's the whole deal with our formal government and the republic that we have. So, anyway, enough of that. Uh, motion to adjourn? I'll entertain that.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll give it to Alderman Harbor tonight. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman Schaefer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.